The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for a few minutes. I would like to take this time for remembering the silence for a minimum of a thirty year member of our planning commission. And thank everybody for coming out to the Board of Commissioners meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. George, could you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Bahaca.
Here.
Commissioner Gordiosa.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
This time, I'd like to make the announcement. We held an executive session December sixteenth and also December thirtieth regarding personnel matters. This time, we have a presentation from a fourth consultant, from Steve Horratt. We hired him back in the summertime for a vote of presentation for the topic of upper Chi Chester. I'll turn it over to Steve and have him out. Okay, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Sure, my mask is on. But it's, well, thank you, but Kevin's not here.
We're far enough apart. Talking, if it muffles the sound, we could, absolutely. Okay, Steve, sorry about that.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and I thank you for the privilege and want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. So, over the course of this study, which we began in summer, was to examine and identify the opportunity for Upper Chichester to create a LERTA tax incentive program throughout the township. And I think Andrew, I'd like to thank him for helping set this up. But I, there's a packet, I think, before you that just kind of outlines the executive summary of, of this study and what we did. So, throughout the course of this, you know, I spent a lot of time in the township with George and we, you know, physically went and visited, you know, the numerous opportunities that you have within the township. So, first of all, I think, you know, you are poised for a lot of new economic development activity. I think your location to Philadelphia, I ninety-five, Route One, Center City, Philadelphia, the airport and Seaport, really, you know, create a very desirable opportunity for people to come and invest within the township. So, some of the things that we were examining were really about, you know, how do you create and court new development within the township? And how do you incentivize, you know, new investment in the community? And the goal being really, you know, you want to create new jobs, new investment, you know, increase property values within the community. And you want to encourage, you know, development really from the outside. So, that can be, you know, new industrial or commercial properties, you know, improvements to existing properties and, you know, ways that you as a township and as the Board of Commissioners, you know, can really create opportunities that can benefit the entire community. So, some of the things, you know, first of all, what is LERTA? So, LERTA was an act created by the Commonwealth in nineteen seventy-seven, and it authorizes local taxing authorities to provide tax exemptions on improvements to existing properties. And it was really to incentivize, you know, the redevelopment or repurposing of aging properties within communities. And so, that it allows all the taxing bodies, and that's, would be you, the township, the school district and the county, to jointly offer these incentives to investors and developers before they submit permit plans for projects. So, how I, you know, what are the mechanics of, you know, creating LERTA? So, essentially what it does, it maintains your existing taxes on a property. Just say, for example, it's ten thousand dollars. By creating this incentive to developers, some of these, just say it's an old factory building, oftentimes it might need remediation or just other environmental issues to be resolved, where there may be, you know, some complicated zoning and things like that. And so, what you can do with the LERTA is you can stagger the reassessment. So, your existing taxes remain the same and you can stagger increases in taxes over a period of years, up to, up to ten years. So, by allowing, you know, each of the taxing authorities to create this incentive, what you're really doing long term is you're investing back in your community. So, it doesn't cost you, the township, anything, but what it does is it incentivize, incentivizes new development on properties that most likely would not have been developed. And, you know, there are properties in every community that have been blighted or vacant. And so, how do you, you know, bring new life into the community and into those properties? So, by the technical definitions of Act Seventy-Six, you know, they have some key criteria which, you know, it's a legal process, so people have to, there's a formal, they have to have at least one public hearing, and that generally, the ones that I've worked on, you need a, it's a public hearing with each of the taxing authorities. So, maybe one or two meetings with us, one or two with the school district. Typically, that first meeting would be with their finance committee. And then, second one is before the Board of School Directors. And then, the last one would be going before the county. And then, as part of this process, there need to be formal resolutions or ordinances that would be created through our solicitor. Typically, the way when I've done these before, you know, we, the municipality, would actually draft the resolution. You, the commissioners, would then vote on that. And then, that ordinance or resolution, we then submit to the other taxing authorities who then, you know, basically pass the same resolution. So, it is a legally created mechanism. And then, once a property would be developed, it becomes, you know, reassessed by the county. And then, the LERTA part of that goes for whatever the new assessment. So, say, you know, if the, one of the recent ones I worked on, the, once the property would be reassessed, it was going from seventeen thousand a year in total taxes to ultimately would be about two hundred and fifty thousand a year to all the taxing bodies. So, to answer one of the questions, is LERTA the same as a cash incentive? So, the answer is no. It's an incentive on paper against future taxes that an investor or developer would be creating. So, so, one of the things that we did is we, we spent a lot of time, you know, looking at the properties within the township. And, you know, you have a lot of really, I think, properties that, you know, offer this kind of potential. I think would be very attractive to outside investors. And I think would benefit all of the taxing bodies that, you know, for municipalities and in the school districts as well, like, how do you create new revenues? And, you know, really, the only mechanism is through, you know, increasing taxes. And what this does, it allows you the opportunity to create taxes on commercial industrial properties. Don't put really a burden on the school district. So, it's, uh, it's called increasing tax ratables. So, how, how can, how can some of these incentives help us as a township? And typically, you know, these can be used as a catalyst for projects. And, you know, if we looked at some properties, you know, that you, you know, are real high priorities for the township, you know, as we would court new developers or new developers come to us, this is a mechanism that's very, very attractive to improve different properties. And it's a very powerful tool that the state created to really help all communities throughout the Commonwealth. And I think, you know, one of the reasons, you know, why LERTA incentives matter, in twenty twenty, Amazon was looking for a new East Coast second headquarters location that would create fifty thousand jobs. And so, part of their criteria is they, they were looking, you know, all over the East Coast, primarily in cities like New York and Philadelphia and, you know, down in Virginia. And so, all of these cities, you know, had all sorts of tax incentives. So, that was part of the criteria, that if you're creating fifty thousand jobs, that's people buying fifty thousand new homes and, you know, utilizing all the goods and services within a community. And, you know, there, you know, it was like a fifty billion dollar project. I think, you know, one of the examples I'll show you later, in Percasie, we had large industrial building, which a California cosmetics company was looking at. And local school board did not support that. And so, the company, you know, they were looking at communities that had these incentives. What ultimately happened was we ended up getting a warehouse distribution center in the building that only has nine employees versus three hundred. And then, I just wanted to talk, you know, I, my consulting company, I work on economic development and revitalization for communities and have successfully worked on actually creating and implementing these in a number of different communities. So, one was in Happer, O.P.A., which is in Montgomery County. It was a blighted property, had been empty twenty-five years. You know, had some remediation issues with that, they needed a lot of zoning changes. And we were able to create a LERTA, there was a five-year LERTA, and it took the taxes from roughly twenty thousand a year to two hundred and sixty thousand a year. And it saved, was the savings to the investor of about six hundred thousand dollars. In Percasie, we have one, it's actually currently underway, and that was a twenty million dollar project. And it was an old factory building, two blocks from the town center. And in this instance, it was a residential conversion because it fit really more the current character of the community and supporting, they've opened sixty new businesses in the downtown area. And years ago, there were a lot of factories within this community, just because it grew up around the railroad. And it met kind of this real nationwide demand to convert old factories into these repurposed kind of upscale New York-style apartments. And then, in Sellersville, where I work, they had a forty-acre blighted industrial site, very extensive environmental issues. And there, they've had two five-year LERTAs. So, the first one had expired, but during that time, we brought a thirty thousand square foot or, yeah, thirty thousand square foot building called Solar Manufacturing. They have fifty real high-tech employees there. And then, just last year, the taxing authorities renewed it for an additional five years. And we had developers currently submitting plans for nineteen million dollar four-building projects, so each building would be thirty thousand square feet. And so, they're coming before a planning commission, I believe, next month. So, there were a couple of things that we examined within the township. So, the first option was a blanket-wide LERTA, like, the entire township, every that, you know, every property within the township would qualify. And, you know, can we create a very broad LERTA like this? Yes. Is it really practical? I, I sort of believe no. And, you know, the pros of it, it creates a lot of interest just from the outside community. But just on the internal piece of this, if each applicant needs a public hearing, you know, I think just internally, you know, could create a very overwhelming situation just to handle and process all these applications. And not all of the properties within the township would actually qualify. And then, one of the other kind of hazards to this is, you know, it could create some predatory or unwanted applicants. So, there may be projects that, you know, you as the commissioners, you don't feel align with kind of your aspirational goals and that align with some of the planning documents you've already created for key locations within the township. The second option we explored was creating specific alerted districts. So, this might be along the three-twenty-two corridor, which seemed like a really logical choice. And we worked closely with your planning consultant, and he created kind of a district map that could be utilized. And here, Brian created the map, I think it was like a thirty-foot radius, you know, from the center line of three-twenty-two. And here again, you know, many of these properties wouldn't technically qualify, you know, based on the state criteria. And here, also, I think, you know, just cautioning that, you know, do you want every property being able to apply to this? So, you know, you know, part of what we want to do and part of what you've created in your planning documents is you have very, like, key objectives for economic goals within the township. And then, option three would be really, you know, looking at very targeted properties within the township. And what I think is more, I would recommend this, I think is more strategic, that, you know, then, one, we can proactively go and court the types of developers who will build the types of projects that you want. And then, we sort of, as the township, would act kind of like the concierge and we would, you know, meet with developers and walk them through the entire process. And then, as part of that, we would collaborate with them, you know, not only internally, but with the school and county and actually go with them to all of those meetings and help them prepare the documents. You know, evaluating our properties, I mean, there are just many, many properties that I really think are like a perfect, you know, opportunity or have a lot of potential to actually apply this to. And what I'd almost recommend is, you know, if we start off on these key projects first and then, you know, evaluate how it's going, then you can always expand that. And then, there were some recommendations, you know, from this finding. So, I think number one is like changing and influence public perception of the township as a really strategic investment location. That, you know, the large Philadelphia real estate firms and developers that I deal with, I mean, they, they are looking for properties and they are looking for opportunities. And I think, you know, the more we can promote and create some, you know, excitement and enthusiasm about, you know, here we have these opportunities, it's a fabulous location, you know, we are business developer friendly, that I, I think you have a lot of opportunity for growth. You know, target the high-impact properties, you know, those would, you know, the ones that would bring the biggest return, which would tend to be the larger properties. You know, and there's like the industrial sites sort of on the other side of ninety-five, that's like an ideal location, I believe. You know, actively promote the township to outside developers on a consistent, regular basis. I was talking to these People Colliers International, very large firm, and they are the ones, you know, these big companies, you know, come to them for, you know, help with site selection so that, you know, we can meet with them. And they were very excited, actually, when I told them about the opportunities, you know, potentially that you have here. And then, I think most importantly is, you know, rather reacting to people coming to us, like, very actively go and court the types of, you know, either companies or developers who build the kinds of projects, you know, that, that you aspire to. And then, one of the other things, you know, we were talking about, well, how do we actually help our businesses or our community? And so, one of the really key things that you have control over, and that's pretty expensive for the developers, are the fees and permits. And one of the things I had done in Percasie, we reduced the fees and permit revenues, or fees, by fifty percent. And you would think intuitively, like, that revenue would go down, well, it actually more than doubled. And for the big developers, it saved them hundreds of thousands on projects. But it also benefited the residents because then they started coming, building decks, building additions. And I think that was something it, it seemed, you know, that the township was interested in doing. You know, I think creating a more formalized economic development team, that would be, you know, the senior engineer planner and others, to proactively meet and court with investors. And, you know, right in the beginning, when these developers begin their projects, I think it's important to create these roundtable meetings where you troubleshoot and problem solve, you know, before they're investing in their own engineering. One of the things, just, you know, simple low-hanging fruit on our website, you know, I think putting the economic development page on the homepage. And, you know, I, I think just making it easier to find that. And then, one of the things that I also think we could do to help the residents and the, our existing businesses is create almost a localized Chichester LERTA so that that's something that just we, the township, would approve and it wouldn't kind of have to meet the criteria of the state program. So, I think you're poised for a lot of opportunities. I think you can implement this, you know, immediately. And I think, you know, depending, you know, what your thoughts and questions are, I, I, I think you're poised to have a very good year as an outcome of this. So, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, and I don't know if anybody has any questions or...
Yeah, Steve, I'm gonna open it up. We do have an audience here in the public, but I'm gonna open it up to the Board of Commissioners first. If any of them have any questions on your presentation, they can ask you.
Sure.
Nicole?
Hello, this is Commissioner Whitaker.
Yeah, I have.
Do we have, we have to get approval from the school district before moving forward?
What I'd recommend first is just, you know, are they open to having a LERTA within the, the school district? So, you know, they're the bulk of anybody's tax, so, you know, having them on board, I think would be a really strategic, you know, choice for us. So, typically, that would be something, you know, I mean, you know, any of us could go and meet with the school board typically, you know, I, we'd meet with the business manager and superintendent first, kind of outline sort of what this program is, we could illustrate, you know, what the benefits to them are. And then, we could also, you know, as each project would come up, then we'd have to kind of go back and meet with them again, but that would be for more like formal approval. So, yeah, we would like to get their blessing.
It requires.
Um, you can do it without them, but like, that's really where the significant savings are to developers.
Good evening, Steve, nice seeing you again. Just a question to follow up. Did the other three communities in the school district have to agree to the LERTA as well? Or just Kennedy, Upper Chichester, the school district and the county?
Yes. Yeah, so it wouldn't be the other municipalities that might be within the district's borders. It would just need to be us, yes. An example in, uh, the one, Sellersville, where I work, this, I don't know what our proportion of total real estate taxes are, but in Sellersville, seventy-two percent of the tax goes to the school district. Fourteen percent goes to the county and thirteen percent goes to the borough. So, you can see, you know, without the school district on board, I mean, that's the monster share of the, the tax bill.
I, I, I had, basically, I had the same question that Commissioner Whitaker had, was about the, the, the school district. So, I know that's the, the bulk of the tax, so if, if there was going to be any major tax incentives, I, I think the board should sit down with the school district to see if they would be agreeable to this. If not, I don't know what the benefit would be to move forward. But, um, but I'm, I think we should keep, keep on talking to see if we can get it done.
Yeah, the benefit really to the school district, I mean, they're, you know, how do they create new revenues? So, if you're bringing in, you know, say like a new company, you have Boeing here. Like, if you bring a big company like that into the community, like, it creates a lot of tax revenue for them without, you know, the burden of school students in the system. So, it is a really positive, you know, I, I think incentive for them as well. And we would kind of be leading that. So, you know, on behalf of the community, you, the township, are taking the lead, but everybody in the township benefits.
Right. But if the school board's not on board, then hopefully the, the county would be in agreement and we can give a discount on the county and local taxes for a certain amount of time.
Correct. Yeah, you need to, right. And it's still a significant savings, but...
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, thank, thank you.
One question, um, one of the options would, would be to do certain areas.
Correct.
Comes in and wants to do something in one of them areas we don't designate. Can we still make them eligible? I mean, how, how could you handle something like that?
Right, that's where I was recommending, if we target key properties, then it's not... Right, if you have a district and you, you have a property outside that district, you know, would they, would we exempt them, you know, approve them anyway? Which I think you should, if it's a good project.
We can, can we is my question.
Yes, yep.
On, on that note, Steve, with the presentation tonight, did you, did your company come up with a criteria? Is there a certain criteria to meet Florida? And have you developed a map on our suggestions from day one with how it all came about with the three-twenty-two project with all this open ground that we do have? Have you put that map together for us to get started?
Yes, so, our planning consultant, that's Brian Seidel, created a LERTA map, which, what I had here was just kind of the summary of that. But, yeah, we did look at a map, like, different zones, and then George and I were looking at, like, key, specific properties. So, that's something that we could, you know, share with you after this.
The other question, I answered most of it already, but they don't meet the criteria of LERTA.
Oh, yeah.
The incentives are still on the table for them? And it may not affect the taxpayers, or just give them the incentives on these recommendations that you gave us tonight?
Right, the state has, like, defined LERTA guidelines. So, that I'll share with you with, it's this Act Seventy-Seven. And, you know, it had You know, it had, by their definition, it has to meet one of those criteria. Different communities though. You know, you, you as the governing authority can create some of those defining things as well. So when you would create. Alerted resolution, you could actually, I think, for, and we'd have to check with your solicitor, but I think you. You as the governing body can create some more definition to that.
Any other questions for the commissioners? George, do you have anything?
So, uh, I want to recap Steve's presentation with kind of what we, uh, me and him had worked through as kind of what we saw as the best case situation, right? So, uh, the reason we brought up the building code fees was because that could be an incentive that could spur your current. Uh, your current property owners and your current small businesses and give them an incentive to renovate, to expand. That's a, a, a quick hitter for the smaller projects, right? It's not going to. Um, it's not going to be the catalyst for someone to say, I'm tearing down this building and put something else up. But as you work to develop like a small business center, like your town center, this would be a great incentive to, to. To get people to start making small incremental improvements on the properties. And I think if you've noticed, if you've been to some of these thriving town centers that are redeveloping. They're not necessarily redeveloping with a bunch of new properties everywhere. It's a lot of small little investments into the properties that exist there. And some of the nicest places that you go from like an activity perspective, you know, still have broken sidewalks and, and things. It's just that. There's that small improvement. So. That being said, that was what we saw as like that low hanging fruit, something that the board could do here. Uh, it wouldn't be significant, it wouldn't have a significant impact on our bottom line and it could potentially increase. Um, the, the amount of permits that we got into the door. That also could be something that could be done for residential permits. To incentivize people to invest in their homes, which again can incrementally increase the, the property values as people are making small improvements to their homes. Uh, so you get, you know, it's like that, uh. Full disciplines of execution. A lot of people moving in the second, same direction towards a common goal has a massive effect on everyone. So we thought that. Looking through all this, that was like the low hanging fruit, go get them could be knocked out right away. Um, when we spoke about the, the LERTA, we did, we went through the districts. And we went through the, the whole LERTA and we looked at what are all the potential situations that could come up. And the reality is that while it's a very impactful incentive in, in districts and municipal wide. Uh, it also is a very appealing tool for predatory type businesses that may not necessarily be the businesses that fit. The goals of what the board is trying to accomplish with their planning documents and their redevelopment. So we pivoted and said, having a more of, less of a, um. Less of a map and less of, uh, less of that type of thing, but more of a process in place. So that if someone came in with a project and said, this project makes sense if there's an incentive. We could start cooking boxes and saying, is, is LERTA the incentive, the right incentive based off of the property? Um, so that gives you, you, so basically having a process and having someone to lead that process through. So. Developer comes in, says, I'm really interested in doing this, but it doesn't quite make sense. I need a little help. Oh, well, this property appears to qualify based off of the, the state qualifications for LERTA. We have this ability and resource to lead you through that process. We offer to them, that's a great incentive to not only get them what they need from a financial perspective, but also to handhold them through the process. Uh, the, the thing Steve was talking about is if the school district's not on board, there is also a tax incentive that, uh, Governor Wolf passed a couple of years ago. That allows you at the local level to pass it, basically it's the LERTA, um, with just, just off of your, uh, local taxes. Uh, the issue with that, again, it's not very impactful. So when you start talking to people and you say, hey, it's going to save you two thousand dollars. It's going to save you ten thousand dollars. They're looking for, you know, the eight hundred thousand dollars to be able to put in the intersection they're required to put in for their project. So it could be again, a nice tool for some, maybe some of the small additions. Um, you know, development in, to existing structures, but it's not that catalyst for that large redevelopment. So that was kind of like the, the, the three pronged phase. And then number four is like you said, other incentives. So there's incentives from every level of government, from every level of, uh, you know, various different nonprofits. For various businesses meeting various, uh, criteria. And, you know, when someone comes in, a lot of times those bigger businesses, they know what those incentives are going to be based off of what they're doing. I've got fifty employees. I qualified for an SBA. And this, uh, incentive here, but to also have someone here, uh, you know, in that process. So we've engaged them, we walk them through. And they start to, to explore the business and, and find out a little bit more. And then explore those options and then introduce them to those options, introduce them to the SBA. Introduce them to the county for, uh, development opportunity, uh, you know, any opportunities there. Uh, introduce them to D C E D for those, those. Would be very, could be very impactful on very, uh, some of these projects that we have.
Uh, Steve, we do have some public here. Uh, I'll go to the public. There's any comments from the public for the presentation tonight. Come up to the podium. Okay, uh, state your name and address and your telephone number. Anybody in the public want to come up? Also, we have, um. Our board of commissioners meeting is being hybrid format. So it allows in-person and participation members on the board as well as the public. The public may participate during the citizens' comment, which we are offering now for the presentation by dialing five seven one. Seven four eight four zero two one. And enter in the PIN three five seven. That's one six nine zero pound. Phone number again is five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. Enter in three five seven one six nine zero for the pound. You can mute your phone by pressing six. Please state your name, address prior to making your public comment. Only on. Their public pre- uh, presentation on the LERTA tonight. It will be open for two minutes. Or six.
Uh, the one thing I'd like to add to what George was, um. Talking about like the menu of different incentives that, you know, as we were. Identifying each individual property. You know, all of them have very unique uses and characteristics. So. You know, what he, what he's talking about is, you know, with D C E D, there's different loans and. You know, I've worked very closely with the SBA. So I think, you know, moving forward, if you're creating a business developer. Friendly environment, like each property. They're all going to be unique. So it's not going to be like a blanket coverage, but some may qualify for LERTA, some may not, but they also may. You know, qualify for some of these other grant programs or low interest financing.
Okay, let it be known, there was no public comment for the, uh, presentation on the LERTA tonight. Steve, we thank you very much.
And thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to work on your behalf, uh, you know, to create some opportunities. Okay. Thank you all. Good evening then.
Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, George, and thank you, Andrew.
Go back in, into the. Right now, board of commissioners meeting. We're opening up the citizens' comment. We're opening up to the public. Uh, again, on, uh, as we are virtual. And, and in person tonight, the phone number will be five seven one seven four eight. Four zero two one. Enter in three five seven one six nine zero pound is your PIN. Phone number again for citizen comment is five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. The PIN is three five seven one six nine zero pound. You unmute, mute your phone, press star six. And please state your name and address prior to making a public comment. Other comment will be open for two minutes. Please note, there was no public comment for the board of commissioners meeting tonight. Move along with the citizens' comments here at the building. Any citizens' comments to, to my left, but to the right of the room. Come up, please state your name and address and telephone number, just in case we have to get back to you. Yeah, name and address and telephone number, just in case we have to get back to you.
John Thornton. Seven twelve Dutton Street, Upper Chi Chester. Phone number forty-four eight eight zero seven seven three two. Uh, tonight I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the Upper Chi Chester Fire Department. Uh, we recently had elections for twenty twenty-two. I'd like to introduce our officers for the year, myself being fire chief. Uh, Rob Bowers, deputy chief, he is here. I was trying to get most of the guys here, but tonight is our training night, so everyone unable to attend. John Bannon, our assistant chief. Rob Repine, captain. Steve Cooper, captain. Bill Caricelli, junior, lieutenant. Dominic Mazzoli, lieutenant. Our training officer is Keston Wimmer. Who also is head of the emergency and protective service instructor at the Delaware County Technical Schools. Also a nationally registered, uh, paramedic. Our safety officer, Bill Robinson, he's here. He also is the head of the emergency management for the township. Uh, just want to get, give a quick overview of our current status at the station. In consolidation of Booth, Winogon and Reliance Fire Companies. Is steadily making progress. In twenty twenty-one, during the pandemic. We provided uninterrupted service to the Upper Chi Chester Township and the surrounding communities. We have developed an extensive in-house training program. Led by our training officer and training committee made up of experienced senior members. Certified instructors. We have established a live-in program that assists with our nighttime responses. Currently, we have four members in the program and we're looking to increase that number. Our call volume continues to grow. In twenty twenty-one, we answered eight hundred and seventy-five calls. For service. That's making us one of the busiest departments in Delaware County. Currently, our department operates, operates as a hundred percent volunteer. With the number of volunteers at a critical low, this is affecting our ability to always provide adequate service to the community. Especially during our daytime work week hours. The Upper Chi Chester Fire Department is committed to keep up with the challenges that today's fire departments face. And working on a solution to address the even ever increasing need to meet the manpower demands. Of operating in a safe and efficient manner during these times. We, we plan on having a representative at each meeting to provide a monthly report and to keep. An open line of communication with the board of commissioners. As we need to continue support, need your continued support. So we can continue to provide excellent emergency service to our community. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, John.
Thanks, Woodchamener, forty thirty-seven Yorktown Drive, six ten four nine four four eight seven zero. I have a question for Commissioner Rakowski. How long you been the fire?
Maybe eight years now.
Okay. Well. My question is, how come nothing's been done about the one percent earned income that's been on the board for six to seven years? We've been asking, I've been asking you for years, Ed, and nothing's been done.
It has been done.
No, nothing's been done, Ed.
George, George.
What's been done?
George sent a survey out to the fire departments to get the names. Income and everything else. And then when he requested some other things, there was some, not all, I'm just saying. Some resistance on some of the. Questions we needed to have answered. You're absolutely right. I had brought it up to this board for the E I T for recently the real estate taxes a percentage. It's not everything. Don't have the names. We don't have the people. Um, you have a completely.
Standing is all turned in.
Right. No, it has, no, it has not. There was one that was turned in and when George started. Asking questions and trying to get some information, we started getting resistance on it. Okay, ask George tonight. It's been brought up numerous times to do it. It, it's not going to happen overnight. I want it to happen. I've told you that before. You're always, how come I never answer the email? I see you just about every day. I tell you, tell you my answer. I was the one that brought it to the attention of the board. Why don't we get, try to be about the E I T? It's just been recently, I think, that has been put into the budget and yes, we have not dispersed it. Yes, it's been recently that, uh, Pennsylvania State has says, hey, incentive to the volunteers. For the property tax for up, just the property tax in Upper Chi. We understand that. We don't have the numbers. Our number may be low, so we know what it is. We are willing to sit down to get these numbers again. Now that you're in, it may be a little easier. Now that you're in one company, not formally, but you are, but it, it hasn't changed much. Not to say it's going.
No, I was told because the. The bylaws weren't changing. It was three companies before. Everybody had their bylaws. Now we are working on it.
Something to do with your bylaws.
Oh, that's weird, bro.
Someone was brought up at a public meeting, uh, where there was conversation. That was the, uh, what came up as the issue at the time. There was three separate sets of bylaws and what the board of commissioners are required to do is adopt. A set standards that says, hey, this is what an active firefighter in Upper Chi Chester Township was. I believe this was two years, I want to say two years ago or a year ago. In December, I believe it was that was brought up. So it was when there was still three, everybody was operating. Still at three different stations with three sets of bylaws. Yeah. So at that time, there was, would have been no way for the board of commissioners to adopt a standard set to say, this is the. This is the item that quantifies someone being as a firefighter because we had like, I believe it was like an hour system somewhere. Uh, something, there was a call system in another place. So. My understanding, uh, all along through this process has been that, that the board of commissioners is interested in doing this. Uh, there was also comments at that meeting brought up about other elements of the township fire ordinance that were out of date and needed to be revised. And I thought there was a conversation that there was going to be, uh, a committee set up. To review these items and kind of get this all flushed out in conjunction with the, the merger activity that was going on. So that it could all kind of come to fruition at the same time and be rolled out.
Matter, just as a matter of correction, I know I've brought it up three or four years. Because that's when we initially put it in the budget, uh, for implementation.
I have met privately with Art because we'd sit over at lunch and say, what are the criteria? What you don't want to do is to not include someone who does a lot of the administrative work, because I know that that's a key element to supporting the fire companies. So that's what, that's the kind of criteria we need. I'd be happy to sit on a committee with, with our company to flesh that out.
And I do agree with Mr. Commissioner Neri, it has to be fair to, it's not, I mean, not to say, to say you have the EIT, it's, first of all, they're paying it because they live here in Upper Chi. If they don't live in here, Upper Chi goes to their town, so they won't get the break. You would have, same way if they, if they own a home, that's completely different. We don't know what the criteria on the stage of the level of how high is it, 10% or 20% or whatever it is for a homeowner of that house. Um, I do agree with, uh, Mr. Neri that you got ten top, top ten guys are busting their butt, but you still got the bottom ten that are still participating, and they're just as important as the top ten or whatever. Uh, then the ones that do all the administration, that don't even set foot on the fire truck or whatever, and they're, or they're in there for fundraisers all year round to try to help fund some of the activities throughout the firehouse. To get us, sit down with us and get us a criteria so everything seems to be fair for everybody? Active. Now, I know each fire company has their own, where it's an active firefighter and then an active person. And then, I don't think there's an issue on this whole entire board, and I'm not trying to say they've all been supportive of trying to do something. We just, you're absolutely right. It's just get something, just get it done. If you have some members that, I'm not saying are bipartisan, but you need a chief officer involved with this, so we know who your active members are. Then tell us, what do you feel is the, what's your criteria as an active member? I know there's other fire companies that got this implemented, and they, and they do the same thing. It's not just, it might be Mrs. Smith, because she's the financial secretary, and she's able to do all the paperwork for the firemen. They just want to do plate to fires. Every part is important, and we don't want to leave. Don't get me wrong. My opinion, this is just my opinion, the EIT is not going to kill the township.
Oh, yes.
And because what you guys say, being, as just like John said, 100% volunteer, those numbers are probably half of what you, when I was running, more than whatever they've done. There will be, there will be a thousand calls at one time, and you're right, we're the busiest in this area.
They went up to 100 calls more than last year.
Right, and it's not getting any less. It keeps going up, but the membership keeps going down, and we need to do something here. And I, I think we're on board, and we'll do what we could do. Neri will sit on it, we'll find somebody else, get us a couple members, figure out a criteria of what's fair to everybody. I don't care if the guy, any, some of these guys may not even be, they're young kids that are only working part-time every little bit, but they still live there.
Well, it's just to echo what Ed and Joe were saying. I distinctly remember us asking for certain criterias of what a volunteer fireman, so we know who's eligible for the EIT. And I think they, you know, getting one set of bylaws and you guys working together to be one Upper Chichester Fire Department, you know, getting all those things done, I think is going to help us get this done quicker. So, thank you.
William Robinson, four three three two, Trophy Drive, Upper Chichester, six one oh, four eight five, nine nine five five. I want to thank the commissioners, because this is extremely important. I think we got to get moving on it, because we need it for retention and recruitment. Uh, I'm not sure where the hole ended up here, though, because I've been present at Ogden for a significant amount of time, and I'm not aware of the holdup waiting for me to give you any information, so we got to get that clarified. Uh, you know, as far as the standards are concerned, I agree with the chairman there that we have to look at those that are administrative, which we know who they are. And if the fire company certifies who they are, I think that you would take that certification and recognize. And we know who's doing what and how they're doing it, and those are making response calls. Other officers that can certainly contribute to that. You know, what we're facing too is, we talked about 875 calls. A lot of those calls, we went into COVID-stricken areas. We did a lot of ambulance assists. We were in auto accidents. We don't know who those people are. We had members that were, you know, had contracted COVID. We had a fire policeman die of COVID. So we're out on the front lines, and I, I think that I hear it at the station, and I hear it even tonight from Butch and others, they're looking for that. And then I hear of other incentives, and of course, they read in the newspaper about Radnor and other places having these incentives, and they're saying, why can't we get those incentives? That's not much, you're right, you're absolutely right. It's just a recognition. So again, I appreciate everyone to get involved in this, and also, in any way, again, to get moving, whatever we need to do, so we don't wait another year. All right, thank you.
Any other public comments out there?
Charles Fisher, six oh four, Houghtian Road, Upper Chichester, Pennsylvania, six ten, four nine seven, thirty five, forty eight. A brief comment, reading in a paper recently, uh, redistricting, there's a map being drawn up. Apparently, we're being reassigned to District 159 from 160 where we've been. And my concern there is, seems to me that that was basically done as per the Constitution of Pennsylvania, based on population distributions, trying to eat, bin out every one of the districts. But I think it's time that we look at our community from a standpoint of how our community is made up. You know, what's our community consists of, from a standpoint of our economics, our social, our, even our political backgrounds and whatnot, and it should be based on a community-based, somewhat community-based representation. We need representatives represent our interests and what we're trying to do. We heard about Lerta tonight, we heard about interest, fire company perspective, EIT and whatnot. These are issues that are unique to our community, all right? And our community shares similar interests to communities that we have been associated with historically for several years. And to re-district us to another area where their particular issues may not align with ours, right? From a standpoint, certainly there's needs for commonality, but there are also unique needs. We're not along the riverfront, we don't need redevelopment along the riverfront. You know, uh, we're not in a situation where our community needs total revitalization from a standpoint of trying to recover where the school district itself is in bankruptcy, which would be Chester, I guess. But my point being that I think that this needs to be addressed by the board with respect to how you feel about where you sit with respect to our current representation here. And I would like to see it be more community-based than it is population-based.
Thank you. It is on the agenda tonight for the board to act on, so. From there, is there any other community?
I have a comment. Have you saw, have you looked at the map? And are you aware that you can make a public, you can send a letter as well? You did, you did, okay. The date to submit that is January the 18th. Um, and yeah, we will discuss it this evening.
So I could put Chichester all by itself, Upper Chichester?
Yeah.
Actually, it's sixty-one, but it's a variant.
Hold up, John, before you leave, sorry about that. Can you get that list of officers to George, so we just have it on file? Not, not tonight or whatever, whenever, whenever you get it. Sorry about that. Thank you. Sorry about that, Marie. We'll move on to our regular meeting. Uh, cabinet approval of the minutes for, from December ninth, 2021, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move. There are a few amendments I'd like to make, uh, good on page twenty-nine, line twenty-five. Uh, there is an error, it says January twenty-nine, 2022, which is January nine for the installation of that co-officer to agree with the, uh, the line ten. That needs to be corrected. I've mentioned to George, I have it noted here. On page forty-two, line twenty-five, it says the Willbrook Clubhouse, which is actually a Willbrook Clubhouse. And then we do need to also, uh, in the next step, approve the CBVG meeting, which doesn't seem to be on the, uh, the table. But there is a correction there, too. Can we do that under new business group?
We need, uh, it was a hearing, public hearing.
Do you need to approve it? Okay, so can you make that correction?
What was that correction for the CBVG?
One, page ten, line twelve, it's Mr. Neal's, but I believe it's her comments that are-
Any other questions? I'm motioning on the floor to approve the amendments to December ninth. All in favor?
Aye.
Line eight and nine will be read from Commissioner Neri.
Consider a motion hiring Walter Caver, Caver, Junior to the position of seasonal crossing guard in Upper Chichester Township, so move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, two fifty-five cents. Move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order. Number ten through thirteen will be read from Michael Gardiner.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion accepting the final inspection punch list for the two developers, Wawa and Provco, Pongo, Pine, Pinegood, for the project at Chichester Avenue Meeting House Road, and furthermore authorize the township manager to forward the punch list to developer via certified mail.
Any questions? Lisa, there are, I was talking to Rich today, you know, we'll take care of the one with the neighbor and the fence. So we'll make sure you get that letter, if that's on the punch list, for the trees.
Yeah, they currently haven't, haven't advised us that they'd completed the punch list. So once we get an advisement that everything's finished, we'll take a look and move forward. But I, I did both, um, send that to both Wawa and to Provco, the comments that I made on the punch, on the punch list.
I'm just letting you know, we'll get the letter from, this is my resident, so you have it for your liking, so.
Yeah, I just think it's better that we have something from those two residents, that they don't want that, so that we have, we have it on record writing from them that, that they're okay with everything.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Like, like to make a motion accepting the final inspection punch list for WP Boothwin Auto Zone for the project at Chichester Avenue, Mill Road, and furthermore authorize the township manager to forward the punch list to developer via certified mail.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Like to make a motion considering a resolution authorizing a new escrow release to Ashley and Daniel Morris in the amount of four hundred eighty-seven dollars and zero cents.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Uh, lastly, I'd like to, like to make a motion granting Boothwin Fire Company, number one, a waiver from the township fees associated with their submittal of a reverse subdivision application.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order. Thank you. Uh, number fourteen through sixteen would be Commissioner Joe Biald.
Consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to prepare and advertise bid specifications for a thermoplastics line painting maintenance contract.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to prepare and advertise the bid specification, specifications for the Stormwater Maintenance Project in the Tower Circle Storm Basin.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Consider a resolution approving the Act five thirty-seven Plan Amendment as provided by Delcor.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so order. I'll read number seventeen, but I will be taking number eighteen off, uh, and only because it's a different type that was brought to our attention last week. Remember to the board, consider a motion authorizing the township manager to submit public comment on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, opposing the Pennsylvania Preliminary House of Representatives District map.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Neri?
Um, I'd like, I'd have to go over the letter with, uh, George, which is the number of questions I have to see corrected. But also, I'd like it to sit in the yard and working, because I know at least one member is going to vote again.
Any other questions? Nicole?
Get some, George?
I was just going to ask the, 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 the.
So my comments were, I shared with the board in an email that I hadn't thought of it from the perspective that we heard from our residents this evening. Um, I was thinking that if there isn't a possibility of changing, that this could be an opportunity for, um, a change in that position in the 159th, as I stated. Um, not sure how, it's, it's shifting, right? It's shifting, and it's been shifting over the past 20 years. It was my ward, half of my ward for a while, and then it went to four and one, half of one, then it was half of two consistently, then half of three. Um, the population has changed, so after the next census, it's going to shift again. So, um, I'm not, I'm kind of, you know, in the middle, as a, you know. If it doesn't change, we have an opportunity. If it does change, you know, um, I'm sorry, if it doesn't change, then, um, we're still good, right? Half of the town is covered by the 160th. Um, if it does change, then we have an opportunity to make some changes in that, in that seat, so.
No, I just, my one concern is about equal representation. I know the city of Chester is about thirty-three thousand people, we're roughly seventeen. And the financial issues, as indicated in here, um, city of Chester is in Act forty-seven, which they're financially distressed, and they've been like that since 1995. And historically, the representation has, um, you know, anytime grants or financial aid from the state, I believe, you know, they've been, that representative has been actively, you know, been a cheerleader for the city of Chester. And my, my one concern is, is the, is Upper Chichester going to be lost with that? Since, um, you know, there's two different, um, aspects there versus our financial security, well, not security, but our, we've been very, um, physically responsible, and, you know, the way we generate revenue is through taxes, and we get aid through state funding and grants. And if this goes through, my fear is the only way we're going to be able to get aid is just through raising taxes. And I just don't want to be able to do, I, I don't want to go down that road.
I'm not going to be critical of our current representative, because I think he does a great job, but I don't believe that it's been a great deal of Georgia's, in fairness, a great deal of grants or funding that we are eligible for or not. I was hoping for it, that it's come from Representative Williams' office. We got, yes, we got, and I'm saying, we got support from his office, but you, you see in the newspaper constantly.
Neither one, really.
Right, right, right.
Either one, I mean, not just the one, Joe?
I, I just don't think that them are, I, that's an urban city, basically, and we're- suburban, I, I mean, we're, we're not even in the same, we should be with Bethel, Aston, you know what I mean? I just, Charlie.
On the other hand.
I agree with a lot with, with what he said, it's.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Right.
You'd have to redo the entire map, and you'd have to, you probably would have to circumcise Philadelphia, because that's where the extension has come from. They've made Philadelphia districts extend into Darby, Collin, Sharonville. Okay, so that takes part of the old one sixty-second, one sixty-second away, which moved it down to the pipe, which is when Rodney Reagan moved down to Britley, so he'd be still in its district, you know, and it's, i- if you look at the district that's cur- is currently constant, one fifty-nine, it goes up the pipe for Eddie Stone and Timdom, I believe, as well as Chester. And so there's eleven thousand people out there on that side, there's thirty, Michael's numbers, right, there's thirty-three thousand in,
Chester.
And seventeen here, so there's twenty-eight thousand people outside the district, outside Chester. If you wanna group with those people.
Much more smaller urban-style communities than us, you know what I mean?
I mean, even on that, I mean, you're, I, I get everybody's opinion, right, and we have to get it, and I want everybody to voice their opinion with George, but George is leaving for his vacation, we gotta get this letter out. And I agree with the resident that, uh, about the interest of the historical history of Boothland and, and, and everybody around us and how it kept. I do, I do believe we should do something, and if it happens, it happens. My question is, if they, if they dissected, though, after it came down, why didn't they go up to the other side? More to set it down to the lower part of, to southeastern part of Pennsylvania? They could've started there and worked up and around.
They historically have moved outside of Philadelphia, around, around the rim. All right, not southern side. Sorry.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of municipalities are changing, are, are becoming with, um, one state rep, right? A lot of, right, right now, a lot of municipalities are split between two state reps. So several areas are going to one state rep. Um, and I'm not sure if that's the goal, um, behind it, but that's, that's what, that's what it looks like.
Well, that could, that could be the goal, but we could shift it back to where we still have one rep, if that, if they do it, if they don't. It's, just don't think, not some, putting everybody's comments together like yesterday, unfortunately, just to get something. And your, your point is valid. Yours is, yours is, everybody is just, especially the residents, we're listening to them, they know, I, I just, I, I mean, just hearing tonight, I didn't know you could draw your own map. I knew there was a comment part there, but not draw, draw the map, that's our job, but still. Uh, we have a, we're, we have a motion on the floor, we're in the questions. Uh, the motion on the floor was to, uh, authorize the manager to submit a public comment on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, opposing the Pennsylvania Preliminary House of Representatives District map. Uh, I opened up to the comment, and the questions, and before we vote, all in favor? All in favor, send in a letter?
Aye.
Aye. I know I, I'm the time vote, but I.
Are we going?
Opposed?
Are we going to, um, make any edits to the letter? Are you saying that we?
Oh, absolutely, everybody's comment, and any comments that somebody has to the letter that we have tonight. This is, this is not the letter, this is just something that George brought to our attention to try to air it out a little bit, get our comments in here. We have a resident that made his comment. I don't know if we're allowed to include that one, or just include it in your own questions.
Uh, if you could send me comments via email, uh, Sunday night, I can work on this.
Okay, oh, yeah.
So I could send it back out Sunday night for review, 'cause it, 'cause it's, we, we don't have to send a letter, it can just be done via the internet, so I will have access to the internet, so if, you know, from a timing perspective, obviously, the sooner the better, but if you give me everything by Sunday night, I can get it together.
And then, like I said, Mr. Neary has his comments he may wanna put in, comments, Nicole, Joe, you have anything, get it to him soon. But, uh, opposed, I didn't get any.
I said yes.
Oh, sorry about that. So moved, and Mr. Yes, to, right, that's what I thought, Mr. Neary was a no, yes. Okay, we'll move on, um, I, George, I can do number eighteen, I just changed the date. But they wanna go seven o'clock. Except it doesn't drag on, is that still okay, or should we just do it at seven-thirty? Right, that's what I think. But can, can a member of, um, and I'll do it on the, I'll let you guys know. A member of the board consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners on Thursday, February tenth, at seven PM, for the presentation of the Boothland Town Center planning document. Questions? Any, well, sorry, for a second.
Second.
Questions, there any, the only reason it was changed up, when we met this past Monday night, just felt that they, that she had enough time not to have to have another meeting for the board, and and still be open up to the public comment, the public advertising on the webpage and everything. They could do it at seven o'clock at night, before we're to hear.
They're only gonna need thirty minutes?
Well, she says she could do thirty or forty-five, I mean, not drag it where it would be a full-blown presentation with all the charts.
Okay.
The, the draft is, what we did, I'll do that under my report, but. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Now we'll move to the Commissioner's report, we'll start with Vice Chair, Madam Chairman, Vice Madam Chairman, Nicole Whittaker.
Okay, good evening, everyone, thank you. Um, just a few comments, the community center renovations are underway and almost complete, it's coming along, um, very nicely, I saw some pictures today, um, from Brian, uh, it was really nice. I'm not sure of the status of the weight room yet, if that got started, or if any of the equipment has arrived. Um, the library decided to postpone its in-person bingo next month, so we're going to have a popcorn fundraiser, again, we did one last year, so this is gonna be from February second to February sixth, it's a four-day turnaround time, so we'll make sure we post that information and share it. Um, the, um, Double Good Popcorn Fundraiser was, was a success last year, and basically, any of the funds raised, um, the library, um, gets fifty percent of those funds. Um, and then finally, the Recreation, our Rec Director, Brian Warren, put together the twenty-twenty-two Recreation Book with, um, our newsletter looks like it's out as well, but our Recreation Book, I'm gonna review this, and then I believe this document is gonna be sent out via emails, too, too much to print, but via email, so it's going to be a, um, overview of all the events that we will have in twenty-twenty-two. So residents are well aware in advance of all the, um, events that Recreation will be providing, um, and most of them, if not all, are at no cost. Um, I think that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Whittaker?
Floor looks real nice.
Yeah.
I, I've seen it.
Okay, good, yeah, looks, the pictures look great.
We should've did that a long time ago, that, that type of floor will last a lot longer.
Okay, uh, no more questions for Commissioner Whittaker, we'll go to Commissioner Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President, the, um, financial reports are available at the, uh, office, as well as the Police Department report will be available at that, um, office. Well, and only question I have is for George, you got the Peach Street easements? Got any of them? Just keep me apprised of that, if you.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neary? Move on to Commissioner Guardiars.
Thank you. Um, I'm not trying to be difficult, but, um, Commissioner Neary, if you voted no on sending the letter, does that disclude, does, should we consider any of your comments to be, to be put into the letter, then, if you're one, if, if you wanna change anything?
The only thing that I asked to change on behalf of the yard was for.
Okay.
And other things are things like where it says S I P, where it should be, uh, and say certain.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you.
My question is, you know, maybe, you may wanna keep it there, George.
Thank you for that clarity. Um, I really don't have anything to report on, I reported on, uh, at the caucus last week of what's going before the planning board and zoning issues, so if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, um.
Or is the, uh, your planning commission, is the Boothland Town Center, the draft presenting at twenty-seven, do they have, do they have that?
Yes, yeah, and I believe Dunkin' Donuts is gone before, no, that.
Don't think those, you guys, that's why. Thank you, Bishop. Planning Commission will have the presentation for, uh, forty, uh, for, forty oh eight Chichester Avenue, as well as the Boothland Town Center.
Forty oh eight, and the G.
Correct.
And just to let the board know, did speak with our township engineer about the, uh, SADA, re- rewriting the SADA, so we are, we're, we're still trying, um, to get that done. Just let the board know. Thank you.
May be brought to the attention of Commissioner Guardiars. We're going to Commissioner Joe Bia.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, highway guys, uh, finished the work down on Douglas, Nicole, we'll let you know.
Oh, really, okay.
The sidewalks in and all that, um, the only thing they, they might have to come back for is, um, the, the final blacktop. They brought it all the way up in binder, so it's level right now, so have to go back and put a finish coat on, I think. I thought you might wanna.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, open, uh, space, uh, surveying, marking, whatever you wanna call, start it, and, um, Jennifer Way back there, all that open space is done, and I think they're going to Creekside next, Lisa? Yeah. By, and markings. What we own and what's basically. Um, probably next month, or in the near future, I just wanna give you a, a heads up. Putt wants to send a couple of guys to some training, um, I'll be asking for you. Like, one of the things he wants to do is, all these doors and locks we have now, um, we have to bring in like a lock service and a special service and all. It can get costly, he wants to train one of our guys to be able to fix them, maintain some and do everything. And I think that one's roughly about thirteen hundred dollars, it's a week, but it would over time would save us probably a ton of money. And the other one he was talking to me about is, um, the back of the trash trucks are made by Kyle. And he wants one of the guys to be trained where we can work on them ourselves, other than that being subbed out. He's looking into what that one's gonna cost him, so you just know it's gonna be coming, I don't wanna hit you blind with it next month or whatever.
Is, is that, um, working on the back of the truck, do we have the equipment to be able to, some of the?
It's mostly just hydraulics and stuff like that, you know, they'll be trained on what makes what work, why this goes up, you know. Right now, we gotta send it out, and it's gone for a week sometime, you know what I mean? He wants to be able to do it in-house.
It'll really help with troubleshooting some of the smaller problems that can be fixed on-site. Um, right now, even if it has a small problem, it has to get sent out, uh, so it, it, we're losing, we have a lot of downtime.
With that training, some of the warranty work, they would be able to do, wouldn't have to send it back.
Can, can we, does that, how can I say, does that create another job position, since it's contractual? Where the union's gonna say, the mechanics in there. Mechanic's gonna be doing it all, it's in his job description?
So the contract affords you the ability to do these move-up rates, so that's what would happen, so the individual trained, and it's a build-in there with, when we built in the, the training, that if someone gets skilled training.
Right.
And if they accomplish that task, uh, on job hours, they get the skilled rate. So that's what they can do, if they, if they get any of these skilled tasks down, they can move someone into that position.
We already have them, but. And, um, uh, the, the sewer report's on file, and I sent all you guys a copy of it, and I have it, unless there's any. And the increase, uh, someone asked me last week what the percentage was, it wasn't a percentage, it was a fifty-dollar a year. Sewer increase.
Sewer authority. Thank you, um, I'll do my report, uh, just, that, for Joe and the Highway Department, real quick, I'm not sure, I, I know we started in November or December, but, um, everybody have their role program ready to go, and they have the list all ready to go, 'cause I know they wanted to start that early, early, the list. Thank you, Jim. I just wanted to put it out there, 'cause it already is, we're January here, and starting, and next month it'll be.
I'm riding with Putt next week.
Oh, we see. Just a reminder. Okay, on my report, um, I just say to think for the Boothland Town Center, uh, we did go over this past Monday night, the concern on the Blue Bull Avenue, they put all the remarks in there. The final draft will, should be done Monday, uh, George, I'm not sure if you're gonna be able to get it, uh, or we'll send it to Andrews, so that other Board of Commissioners could get it. We could give it out to the engineers and, uh, Brian. I'd like to put a couple of copies up here, because we did mention that they could come deal with the city to support a public meeting, and one copy in the library, since everybody goes into the library, then one day. There's a lot of good outcome on that Blue Bull Avenue, a lot of good suggestions, and trust me, I was just sitting at, getting my hair cut at Blue Bull Avenue, and there was a tanker, and literally a tanker, coming off of Blue Bull, trying to go right over when the child happened, you could see the Charlie's sign coming down, the cars going out, but he decided to go right, he couldn't make it. But that's some of the concerns of the Boothland Town Center. And that was, the mention was closing it, and it, it just wasn't complete from last week, and then with all the options, all the options from the state that recommended everything to us, so everything's in there. I, I give a kudos out to this, um, task force, they've done a hell of a job, the inputs from everybody, and it's been really good, and hopefully, we're able to adopt it and mark it into the presentation. All your reports are in your folders, or they should be, I gave the fire marshal tonight. Uh, other than that, anybody has anything for me? Uh, I will say thank you to the fire department, I, I talked to John last week, I think that's a great idea. Public, don't get much public here, the Board of Commissioners, whose numbers are phenomenal, almost nine hundred calls last year. A lot of it is to assist with medics, but a lot of it's every town is using the neighborhood town, and everybody's going everywhere. Remember, this is all volunteers, I know they support, I know they support them, but, um, glad they're gonna come up, give us some way forward, and we have questions, so they, ask them why, who's here, the chief, or the deputy chief, whoever may be. So that's all I have, we'll go to our professionals, so we can keep moving, and we'll go to, uh, Catania Engineer, Lisa.
Turn on. I'm gonna take this off too, I feel very muffled, I'm sorry. Um, thirty-three hundred, we also met with them. Thirty-three hundred, we also met with them concerning some of our review comments, so they should be providing some additional information at the next Planning Commission meeting that they attend. The Community Development Block Grant, the two grant applications were submitted on January the seventh. I have the Greenlight Go ready to go tomorrow, I was hoping I would get it this afternoon, and got caught up with the couple meetings that we had, I did not get the chance to do so. I'll be glad to get the twenty-twenty-two road program earlier this year.
Don't look like it.
That will be earlier, and that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Engineer? Lisa, I got one quick one. Was, if you could look into plans for Wawa, was there any suggestion or anything about when you come out of Wawa to Chi-Haver and make the right, was there any plaque that's basically going to sign that says no left turn? They're doing it quite a bit now, now that we have Furgis doing it, and we have Wawa. I wasn't sure if that was in there, is there enough room on there to put a little plaque there?
I do not believe that there was a restriction for left turns there.
But you have an island that forces them.
I have to check that, I don't know that I saw anything in any of the PennDOT reports that there would be a left, no left turn.
Can we ask them if we could request that? I mean, since they did put an island that forces it to the right.
Yeah, yeah, which you just reminded me, we did check the Happy Harrys, the old Happy Harrys, and all of the signs that are on that approved plan are out there. So if you, we want to ask that Dollar General to place a sign, we can certainly do that.
There was a, did no left, were that?
Yeah.
No, it was just an arrow turned into a.
All of the signs that were on the approved plan are out there, so whatever this was must have been subsequent for some reason or another. The sign that you were saying was missing.
Yeah, there was a sign, a stop sign, because Keith and I went on through the earth, and you could see it laying there, but we couldn't see the sign that was there. But the painting on the blacktop, that was just an arrow going to the right, but kind of thing, I just wanted, how do we force it to do it? Or just ask?
I, I think we could certainly make, just, we have the owner's name and phone number, and make that happen.
Thank you. Any other questions for Engineer? We'll go to our solicitor, Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items, one, we're in the process of resolving a number of the tax assessment appeals that were instituted by the school district. Just reported that none of those, the rest of the issues, all were in the tax, we were multi-interaction items were taken care of, filed, if any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the solicitors?
Quick question for both of you, I think making it a little final, wrapping up the summer, so next week you were supposed to meet.
Any other questions? New business? The merchant tour, John?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.